Good evening. Before we start our meeting, we have a board or council member that will be joining us through Zoom. Kelly, are you there?
Yes, hi everyone. Kelly Parisi here. I'm sorry I'm not able to be there in person. A little under the weather myself and have a house full of cooties. And so, thank you for allowing me to participate remotely. And there are no individuals in my workspace that are over eighteen or under eighteen.
Great, thank you. We will now then like to do the roll call for the meeting.
Commencing roll call. Vice Chair Sammon. Councilmember Esser.
Here.
Councilmember Whitney.
Here.
Councilmember Daley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Ah, here.
Councilmember Parisi.
Present.
Councilmember Orozco. Councilmember Aponte.
Here.
And Chair Prado.
Here.
Thank you.
Just a quick announcement, we do have interpreter joining us this evening. If you would like to listen to this meeting in Spanish, please use the headphones provided in the table in the back. We will now move on to public comment. Does anyone have public comment on any topic not in the agenda? As a reminder, council may not discuss or take action on items not in the agenda.
Members of the public, we are now on item two, general public comment. If you wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or submit as speaker slipped up to the clerk. We have no public comment. Back to Chair.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Commencing roll call vote. Councilmember Esser.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney. Councilmember Daley.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Parisi.
Yes.
Councilmember Orozco. Councilmember Aponte. And Chair Prado.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we will now move along to our first agenda item for this evening, an informational presentation of the city of Redwood City.
Yes.
Which will be a video presentation as we can see here in front of us.
Good evening, councilmembers. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, perfect. My name is Brianna Evans. I'm Redwood City's Equity and Inclusion Officer, and I appreciate the time this evening to talk to you a bit about Redwood City's Economic Mobility Action Plan. The city has been working on this plan for a couple of years now. I'm going to give you a little bit of background and then share what is in the plan. And I'm hoping to hear any of your feedback about how you imagine this affecting North Fair Oaks, if these actions that we're suggesting seem like useful actions to you, or if you have any other partners that you hope we will talk to in the process of finalizing this plan. See, oh, great. So where we are in this process in 2023, we started a landscape analysis where we talked to a lot of different community organizations about economic mobility. We did some community engagement last year in 2024, and we've been working on the plan this year with hopes to implement over the next couple of years. Let's see, I think my slide control is not faster, but if you can help me out with clicking to the next slide, that'll help. Would you click to the next one? Great. All right, next please. So what do I mean by economic mobility? When we say economic mobility in Redwood City, we're talking about the spectrum of experiences that lead someone from being able to meet their basic needs to experiencing stable employment and housing, to being able to save for their own and their family's future. So this is the upward trajectory of a person or a family to improve their economic circumstances over time. And it's important that we think about the different parts of it because we have plenty of members of our community who are working towards economic stability at the same time that we also have folks who are working towards wealth building. There are very different strategies that folks need at different parts of that pathway. Next slide, please. San Mateo County has been engaged in an effort called the Shared Prosperity Coordinating Council over the last couple of years. The Shared Prosperity Coordinating Council grew out of the Recovery Council Recovery Initiative. If you recall, during COVID, there were a group of organizations coming together to figure out how do we support the communities that most need vaccines to get them. So that group has turned into the Shared Prosperity Coordinating Council. They're talking about economic economic mobility using a framework from the Urban Institute called the Upward Mobility Framework, and it has these three pillars as part of it: economic success, being valued in community, and power and autonomy. So it recognizes that that pathway from meeting basic needs to wealth building doesn't just have to do with how much you're making or how much you have in your bank account. It also has to do with your relationships in community, your sense of being appreciated and being connected to people in your community, as well as your own sense of power, autonomy, or ability to direct your own future. So the Shared Prosperity Coordinating Council is working towards creating more pathways to living wage careers for local residents, providing enhanced navigation support for benefits programs, and fostering diversity of elected and appointed representation in San Mateo County. Next slide, please. The council has done a very deep dive on local quantitative data. I won't pull you through this whole thing, but these five pillars are each contain several different quantitative measures, so numbers measures, of economic mobility or shared prosperity. In our county, these are things that let us know if we're moving towards shared prosperity for everyone. Many of these can be measured across different organizations or different jurisdictions, so we can compare ourselves to other cities and counties. But down at the bottom, the last few are things that are specific to San Mateo County. Culturally appropriate system navigation and outreach is a need specific to our community. Job training and career pathways, affordable childcare, youth enrichment, mental health, and food security are all measures that we see differences based on income and demographic in our area in San Mateo County. And the county is tracking these numbers specifically to tell us if we're moving towards economic mobility. So next slide, please. The county effort is has already committed to a few things. So some of those are an economic mobility dashboard so that everybody can pull the kinds of metrics I was talking about on the last slide. A benefits calculator that lets people look at the benefits cliff so they can see if I take an additional benefit or if I receive an increase in wages, what will happen to my other benefits. Technical assistance on economic mobility for elected and appointed officials, career pipeline expansion into county jobs, which are living wage jobs for the most part. Culturally responsive navigation services, civic leadership in underrepresented communities, and engaging major employers as partners. Now, I know I came to tell you about the Redwood City Economic Mobility Action Plan. I'm talking about this county stuff because it is the bigger container in which our work is happening. The county has a lot more partners and a lot more resources than we do as a city. And so we've really been trying to build a plan that is complementary to what the county is doing. Next slide, please. When we look into our local context here in Redwood City, we have done a couple of research projects with Redwood City Together. Redwood City Together last year conducted the Community Collaborative for Children's Success Survey, which engaged over four hundred caregivers and over a hundred fifty youth. And we saw in that survey that financial problems are one of the barriers that youth and adults list when they're talking about what keeps young people from thriving in our community. We asked in that survey as well about people's job experiences, difficulties finding or maintaining jobs, and experiences with financial empowerment information or resources. And that gave us some picture of what our community is experiencing. Next slide, please. We also, as I mentioned, did a landscape analysis where we interviewed over forty organizations in excuse me, in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks who work in some part of that economic mobility spectrum. So we asked them, what's going on now? What do you need? What would it look like if our system was really working optimally for the people that you serve? Next slide, please. Some of the key learnings out of this, a lot of folks still have basic needs unmet. We know this, and yet we heard it again and again. Lots of folks were struggling to, both individuals and organizations, were struggling to find a local convener or centralized information about economic opportunity. Several programs experiencing funding or resource gaps, whether that was dollars or gaps in things like space for the services that they're running. Folks perceiving limited learn-to-earn opportunities, especially outside of the trades. Some of that appears to be a gap in communication rather than a gap in the actual services. Limited jobs and wealth building options for undocumented and mixed-status communities. This appears to be not a gap in communication, but an actual gap in service or opportunity. And then both youth and employers indicating the need for direct support for youth-friendly hiring and onboarding. Young people are arriving at jobs or at job opportunities not knowing what a sick day is or how to dress professionally or what's expected of them in the workplace. And employers are similarly finding they don't know how to communicate with the young people who are coming in and therefore are not onboarding them for success. Next slide, please. So Redwood City has drafted an Economic Mobility Action Plan. The aim is to define local success over seven to ten years, so it focuses on population-level outcomes. We have designed several strategies we think we can get after and see some small progress in over the next two to three years. And a big part of this effort is trying to document shared goals. So identifying what partners are doing aligned work and how can we hold each other accountable to the success of our community. Next slide. The three big goals that we are aiming to change over ten years. Households in Redwood City, North Fair Oaks, experience less stress about money. Redwood City and North Fair Oaks residents use the available employment and basic needs resources when those resources can be helpful. And members of the Redwood City, North Fair Oaks, community feel the power to shape their own future. Notice that in this city plan, North Fair Oaks is included. And so that's part of the reason that I wanted to make sure while our outreach has included North Fair Oaks so far, I wanted to explicitly come to the council and talk to you about what does it mean to have North Fair Oaks as part of this plan as well. Next slide, please. We selected a few different quantitative measures for each one of these big goals. I won't make you dive into all this, but they're, these are data points that are already collected by other agencies, so it's not new data collection that needs to happen. And these are things that are repeated on a regular basis, so we would be able to see change over seven to ten years. Next slide, please. So the strategies that we are planning for reducing household stress about money, expanding access to financial literacy programs, expanding local apprenticeship or employment programs, this is not totally in our control, but we can pursue those opportunities with local businesses, and increasing affordable housing units in alignment with the housing element. So reporting out more clearly about the affordable housing increases that we've committed to. Next slide, please. For ensuring folks connect with the resources available currently, we want to increase communication about the minimum wage ordinance in Redwood City and San Mateo County to make sure that folks are receiving the wages that they are owed and communicate to folks about enforcement. If they're not receiving the appropriate minimum wage, there are steps that they can take as a worker, and we want to make sure workers and business owners know that. Support evaluation of workforce and job development communication pilots. We know people aren't always finding out about jobs in a timely way, so we want to try sending things out via text, sharing information at places where people already are, rather than asking them to come to job fairs and other ways of sharing info. And then proactively pursuing funding to support social need screening tools and navigation services. So whether it's more promotoris or it is a social need screening tool, we want to actively look for the dollars that can help expand the things that are working in our community. Next slide, please. All right, so the last one here, community members feeling the power to shape their own future. Connecting small business owners to support with special consideration of the needs of immigrant, first-time, and cooperative business owners, meaning business owners who are multiple folks owning a business together where the workers own the business. Amplifying and expanding opportunities for civic leadership development. The city has just relaunched its civic leadership program, and we have also started a civic leadership program for youth, helping to make sure people know how their voice can be heard in local government. And updating our city onboarding practices with a youth-friendly hiring guide. When we talked to partners about youth-friendly hiring, they said, "You first," and we said, "Okay, we'll go first." And so we are working with youth-serving organizations to create a youth-friendly hiring guide, and then the city will be adopting it into its own onboarding practices for all staff. Recognizing that youth-friendly onboarding doesn't just support young people, it also supports immigrants, it also supports folks who are returning to the workforce. It supports all kinds of different folks. Next slide, please. I'm coming near the end here. So some of the ways that you can participate are listed here. So these are some of the different different actions that we imagine partners might be interested in taking on as well. One of the most important things that I'm interested to know are the other economic mobility strategies that you're aware of in our community. If there are other organizations doing aligned work, I really want to make sure we highlight that work as part of this plan. And if there are things you think are missing or that you think are off-base, I really would like to know that too, so we can make a plan that feels useful and that we can commit to working on together. I think one more slide here. Great. So what's coming up next? We're still taking feedback about the plan. And we will be presenting eventually to city council for approval in Redwood City. And we will also develop a dashboard to track progress of those indicators so that the public can follow along with us on how this plan is going. All right, I will stop there and turn it over to you if you have any questions, reactions, or feedback.
Thank you so much for that great information. Do we have any comments from councilmembers? Councilordreas?
Thank you very much for the presentation. The Hope Land is very welcome. And I wonder how we as councilmembers can provide feedback for this program?
Certainly welcome feedback now, and I know it's a lot of information to take in all at once. So I am happy to share the slides for you to review, and you're welcome to either schedule time to talk with me or to send me an email with feedback that you have.
Excellent, yeah. And that was my second ask, if we could get some of the or the slideshow to review the information. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Whitney?
Thanks for your presentation. I think it's awesome that you're working on this. Specifically, like, the youth and showing them that there's a pipeline or an opportunity to these living wages, especially in the public sector, we can get them focused on that. I don't know, is there like an internship for high school kids where we can kind of bring them into some departments, like Parks and Rec, and give them like student temporary employment for a couple summers while they're in high school? And then maybe, you know, a little scholarship the first couple of years of college, and you do well with this, and we'll have a job for you when you finish school. But I, I think that's like a real positive way to kind of draw people into the pipeline. There's also people that are older that kind of get left behind, you know, but maybe it takes a while to adjust to the neighborhood or the language or whatever. So there's a lot of neat, I don't have all the ideas to fix it, but I just have some suggestions. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a councilmember of Parisi online.
Hi, Brianna. This was such a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing and for showing up. I am very curious to understand what the feedback period is because one of the things that we have talked about as a community council is the balance and the struggle of those who show up at meetings like this and those who don't for so many very good reasons. We have a community event happening in December. Wait, I'm sick, so Juan Carlos, correct me and keep me honest. We've done it before. It's really darling, but I, you know, I just want to make sure beyond our voices as community council members, we are including other people's, other people in the community as well.
I don't see any reason we can't accept feedback in December. I will say also that we have been getting feedback directly from community members. So we have done focus groups, we've done surveys, and, and they've been across Redwood City and North Fair Oaks. So we know we have talked to a lot of North Fair Oaks residents, but we often don't ask people for the distinct, to distinguish between where they live, in, in part because sometimes people don't exactly know. So I'm glad to receive more feedback and appreciate what I hear is some willingness to take this plan out and say, hey, here's what's being talked about, what do you think about it, and kind of champion it with your community. I would love that and really welcome you. Our hope is probably to wrap up feedback by the end of the year so that we can move it on to council. But if there was a strong reason to wait longer, then I think we could.
Amazing, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Daley?
Yeah. Thank you very much for your presentation. As a former small business owner, and this was many years ago when minimum wage wasn't what it is now. Some of the most joyous years of my life were hiring high school students and high school students that worked at my small business. As minimum wage has gone up and the need for workers' comp and things like that, it does become a little difficult to hire a high school student that can maybe only work five, eight hours a week with the minimum wage that exists and also workers' comp and all the other things that go along with hiring a young employee. It's wonderful, and I could, it's the best experience you could ever get as a young person to go out into the community and get a job early on in life. I think it just, there are some economic challenges for businesses to take on an employee that can only work four to eight hours a week. So I've often wondered and wished that there was a way that some fund would be available to employ young people, but to take some of that financial strain off of a small business that, that seventeen or eighteen dollars an hour becomes something like twenty-two, twenty-three for, for a small business owner. Back when I had my business and could employ young people, the minimum wage was nothing like it is now. And I'm not saying they don't deserve the money, it's just the financial challenge for a small business owner.
I have some good news, which is that Redwood City Together has been testing paying for youth to step into jobs in Redwood City, North Fair Oaks, and they actually just received a pretty large grant to continue that, continue and expand that work. And so it is responsive directly to what you're saying, that it is hard for businesses to pay for young people for a variety of reasons. They're looking for folks with more experience who are ready to step right into the task sometimes, and they also need young people often need different flexibility than folks in other stages of life might. And so Redwood City Together has been paying the wages for those employers so that young people can try out those jobs for several weeks or months at a time. It is, it's challenging to scale though, and so certainly really interested in your ideas about letting businesses know that this is an opportunity and also your ideas about where we may continue to seek funding for this kind of work.
I will put some thought to that. Thank you so much.
First, thank you.
Great. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Esser?
Yeah, Brianna, very nice presentation. You clearly have a lot, a lot going on on this. I was wondering if you could describe to me kind of how you're communicating the progress on the project, particularly the stuff that hits people real time, you know, availability of jobs, minimum wage information and stuff like that. If you have like a website or something, we could point people to link them to our own community website, northfairoxford.org or something like that. In addition to whatever else you may be doing to get the word out about what's going on.
We have set up an economic mobility page for Redwood City. And I will, I guess it's not helpful to drop that in the chat. I'll send the link to Bo to share with you after the meeting. But it doesn't have a lot of real-time information, and we're still figuring out what is most useful to put on that page. It sounds like some of the things that you would be interested to know are about, or that you think the public would be interested to know are about wages and about, did I get that right? About wages and about job opportunities?
Minimum wage in particular.
Yeah, minimum.
Minimum wage in Redwood City is the same as unincorporated. We're seventeen ninety-five now. And I, I believe Redwood City is, starting new year, it's seventeen ninety-five. Redwood City is the same or thereabouts.
It's close by. I wanted, I'm tempted to say it is actually coming up to eighteen dollars, but I could be, I could be thinking a year ahead. But I believe that is on our economic mobility page, a link to the minimum wage information.
Think we can over-communicate that in our communities for sure. Thank you.
Great. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Orozco?
Hi, Brianna. I'm Beatrice. I remember, I'm part of Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center. I remember going through the interview process. It was nice to see how you're doing and all the reports that you've been working on. But something that I wanted to touch on is working with small businesses and also nonprofits. There's a lot of vacant spaces in Redwood City, and I see a few in North Fair Oaks. I wanted to see if you guys have thought about exploring that more, either renting, having affordable rent spaces for nonprofits or small businesses. I know San Jose had this project called Moment. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that project. But I think it's really interesting. I suggested looking it up, but it's basically a collaboration with the city of San Jose and this other nonprofit where basically it's affordable rent. They have like two to five businesses participating, and they, it's kind of like a pop-up style little shop shop. And it brings foot traffic. It also, you know, has this diverse selection of products where people can come in and purchase. And I honestly think that's something that we could use here, instead of having just a vacant lot just waiting there and having, you know, start using it for some reason. As well as, like I mentioned, nonprofits, rent can be expensive. A lot of us are affected by funding right now. So that would be something that I would be interested to learn more about, and if Redwood City has been exploring that.
Could you say one more time the name of the San Jose project?
Moment.
Moment, okay. We, as the city, don't own a lot of spaces that are vacant. We are using our space as almost a full utility, and we do know who the owners of all of the spaces are. So where developers have vacant spaces, we have previously worked with them to open those spaces for community uses, like the former Cost Plus World Market space that was used temporarily for the Black History Museum and now has permanently become, or for the long term, become the Dominique Hoskins Museum. So certainly we can look at where there may be more opportunities for that, and would love to look up what San Jose's been doing that may have some really helpful models for us. Thank you.
Great. Any other councilmembers? No. Brianna, good evening. I have, this is Councilmember Prado talking to you. I have a question as a, as a high school teacher here in the area. What, what is your connection or relationship with the local high school? Because I know all high schools have a work permit program and also find jobs for our youth. Has there been any communication or what is your relationship with the local high schools here that serve our community?
There's been some, but we welcome more. And so our points of connection, Redwood City Together has connected us with the Sequoia Union High School District Board. And there are a couple of board members that work closely with Redwood City Together, and they have helped us get in touch with the careers office previously. Um, and we also have been um in touch with student groups. So the Black Student Union and um there's one other student group that we have um had a couple of conversations with. To understand their experience and how they are navigating job searches. Um, a lot of our partners, uh, nonprofit partners do work with Sequoia students in particular. Um, and so we've gotten feedback from them, but I don't know that we have leveraged the um. School, school systems as um as best we could. So if you have ideas about folks we should be talking to or um opportunities we should be tying into this, I'd I'd love to learn more.
Yes, absolutely. You're more than welcome to come to Woodshead High School. Or I'm a teacher. I'm also a a uh a club advisor to a uh student club, young Latino leaders. Uh, whom all the students live in Redwood City, some city limits, some in North Fair Oaks, Redwood City. So it would be great to, you know, have a a communication and and have a relationship there to, you know, get input from them. So I would like to follow up with you after this meeting and that'd be great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
If there are no other other comments for the more members, thank you so much for your presentation, Brianna.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
If you would like to comment on agenda item number four, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or bring the speaker stuff up to the clip during this time. You'll be given two minutes to speak. No public comment. Back to you, Chair.
Alrighty, thank you. We will now uh move on to item number five with the presentation of Sam Trans. Caltrans and the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. This is a presentation of Grand Boulevard Initiative Action Plan. Uh, El Camino Transportation Infrastructure Modernization Project Update. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Um, can you hear me all right? Okay. Uh, okay, so I'm, my name is Cassie Halls. I am a manager of major corridors at Sam Trans. I'm very excited to present to you all tonight and thank you for having us. I'm also joined by Jacob Buffenbarger. Who is the Assistant Planning Branch Chief at Caltrans and Patrick Gilster, who's the Director of Planning and Fund Management. From the SMCTA or San Mateo County Transportation Authority. Um, and uh we are all here to talk about a multi-jurisdictional, multi-agency effort called the Grand Boulevard Initiative. You can go to the next slide. Okay, um, so this is a partnership between Sam Trans. Uh, the jurisdictions along El Camino Real and San Mateo County. As well as transportation-focused public agencies, including the TA and Caltrans as well as um. CCAG and MTC, advocates and business groups in San Mateo County. And so Sam Trans is working with these partners um to try to transform El Camino Real. And it implement transportation improvements up and down the corridor. Um, and so we are working with these partners to lead workshops with staff um to build momentum around. How to transform the transportation infrastructure on El Camino. Um, and we're working to advance a unified vision focused on mobility and safety on this critical north-south corridor. Um, that serves as both the main street of many local communities as well as an important regional connector. And what we're seeking for all of your input on today is just um, you know, whether you support the effort. And also ideas for how to um uh best shape the action plan. So we're looking to publish the action plan in a few months. Um, and next slide, please. One more. Okay, so why are we doing this? Um, we feel that it's time to modernize El Camino Real. Um, and so this, this corridor has um. Um, it still has a very auto-oriented design. It was designed formerly as a highway. Um, and designed to be, you know, providing fast auto travel. And we think that it needs to be modernized and redesigned to meet the twenty-first century mobility and safety needs. Um, so it's one of the most dangerous corridors in the Bay Area, um, and it also is just a really important. Um, vital connector for all of the communities in the area, including North Fair Oaks. Um, and so this effort goes beyond um just the safety and transportation improvements that we're looking to advance. Um, all of the co-benefits are include place making, economic vitality, sustainability. And infrastructure that will support all the future housing and uh land use developments along the corridor. Next slide. Um, so I just want to take a moment to talk about the GBI um effort and who's involved. So. I mentioned all the jurisdictions up and down um El Camino Real and San Mateo County. Um, and so these folks are on the task force and we also have a focus working group of just the city and agency staff. On the task force with the city and agency staff are also business groups, advocates. And um other, other groups that are affected by El Camino. Um, and so we've had about a year of of meetings now. Uh, focused on how do we kind of from the ground up, from all the the city staff and others that are involved. How do we come up with a shared vision for what we want to see on the corridor? Next slide. Um, and um, it's great that we have a lot of um agencies that are involved in El Camino. There are five agencies that have a stake in El Camino. And so one of the things we're trying to do is is speak with one voice. So work together to make sure that our policies and plans are aligned for El Camino. And so that local jurisdictions, when they want to make improvements, um, it's it's very clear, you know, who to go to. Um, how we're working on El Camino and where to go from here. Um, and so um it's, one important note is that the TA and MTC are also funding partners. So the the GBI Action Plan, which I'll be talking about today, is funded through um a grant we received from MTC with support from the TA. Um, and these five uh transportation agencies are all involved in the working group as well and task force. Um, next slide. Um, so there's a lot of activity, activity happening up and down the El Camino Corridor. Um, and cities, Sam Trans, Caltrans, CCAG and the SMCTA are all involved in various transportation studies. Of streetscape changes on El Camino. And so the GBI Action Plan, which I'll be talking about over the next few slides. Serves as a blueprint for all of this work and the individual studies that you see here on the slide, including. Um, Redwood City in Atherton where um a lot of the North Fair Oaks efforts are underway. Um, those are providing the design alternatives. Um, and we're providing kind of the regional vision. So what are the facilities we want to see? Um, that are important for the regional connections. So because El Camino is both, you know, the main street for local communities and this regional role. It's important for these local efforts to move in lockstep with the regional effort. To make sure that we both have context-specific designs as well as a seamless experience for all users, whether you're walking, biking. Taking transit or driving. Next slide. Okay, so I just have a couple of slides on the GBI Action Plan. I'll keep it relatively brief. And then I'll also be asking a couple of questions for the council um about the plan and and whether it aligns with all of your goals and. And ideas for El Camino. Um, and so this is a, the GBI Action Plan, the Grand Boulevard Initiative Action Plan is. Um, meeting the requirement that Caltrans has to do a feasibility study for El Camino. But we, we see it as an opportunity to refine design concepts prior to starting the next phase of implementation. Um, and also to, what we're doing is we're seeking adoption by uh Sam Trans and the SMCTA in the winter. So that's the current schedule. And the bedrock of this action plan has been all of the work that the task force has done. And so we thought, we sought extensive input from city partners along the way in each step of the, of developing this plan. And so this action plan is intended to create a unified framework. Um, that the countywide, regional and state agencies can establish and local agencies can contribute to. Um, and we're, we're leaving it up to the local jurisdictions to come up with their preferred designs for streetscape improvements. But this GBI Action Plan sets the broader uh regional framework. Next slide. Um, so this is just a high level overview of how we've sought engagement for the GBI Action Plan. So we have these council meetings up and down El Camino. We've also um engaged all the local jurisdictions as well as advocates and other groups in the task force and working group meeting. Um, we have a steering committee of all the, the five transportation agencies. And also we'll be seeking um the board approval in the, in the end of the calendar year. Next slide. Uh, and one thing just to know in terms of, that's the engagement for the GBI Action Plan as a whole, which is that regional vision. However, um, a major input is all of the local efforts that are underway. So there are all these plans along the corridor. And all of those plans have their own engagement strategy. So we're really relying on the local plans to um do the, you know. Grassroots um outreach and engagement and then our broader vision ties it all together. Um, and so one of the main outputs that we've had from a recent uh GBI Task Force meeting. Um, is a corridor-wide visions for what we want to see in the future for El Camino. Um, and what, what we heard from all of the cities and other folks is that El Camino is not safe. It does, it's not a very vibrant street currently, and so they want to see. A place where people of all ages and abilities can travel comfortably and feel, you know, comfortable and and feeling pleasant in the environment. Next slide. Um, and then this is a high-level overview of some of the content that is in the GBI Action Plan. Uh, it's a little hard to read on that slide, but hopefully your printout is a little bit easier to read. Um, so we know that there are a lot of problems with El Camino. There are potholes, there are flooding issues. There's, you know, street trees that are causing the the sidewalk to buckle. Um, but we, one of the main exercises we did with all of the cities was to try to figure out what are the priority problems? So what are the things that are most important to solve, both from the city perspective as well as from the data? Um, so one of the things we saw in the data is that El Camino has a very high rate of fatal and serious injury crashes. Especially for people walking and biking. And so this came up again and again as a top priority for all the cities, all the advocates. And uh business groups, et cetera. Um, and so our approach to addressing that. Is to adopt a safety-first mindset that eliminates fatal and serious injury crashes. And then the next, you know, equally important level of um of issues is related to mobility. So how people travel in the corridor. And what we heard consistently is that El Camino Real has a highway-like design that discourages alternative transportation options. So our approach to this is to transform El Camino Real into a complete street that works for all users. And then lastly, um, we heard a lot about process. We heard that there's a lot of bureaucracy, a lot of difficulty in making improvements on El Camino. And so um the way that we want to address this is to create a new framework for change that aligns vision, process and funding. And how we're doing that is we are leading in partnership with Caltrans and SMCTA. We are leading a coordinated Caltrans uh project development process, which essentially just means that. All of the cities along El Camino are going through the same Caltrans process rather than each city having to go at it alone. In order to make the improvements that we want to see. Next slide. Um, so this is just a menu of options for the types of streetscape improvements that are included in our action plan. And so not every jurisdiction are going to have each of these types of improvements, but the idea is more generally. These are the types of improvements that we could see along the corridor. So everything from traffic calming, you know, adding more lighting. To wider sidewalks, having separated bikeways, um, having bus stop improvements. Having um transit lanes and um other types of of transit infrastructure. Next slide. And one of the things we've worked really hard to do is make sure that we are building on all of the great work that all of the local jurisdictions have conducted. So we're building on all the plans and projects in North Fair Oaks. Um, we know that your um North Fair Oaks Community Plan did a lot of extensive. Um, you know, getting a lot of feedback from the community and so we used a lot of uh of the engagement. Uh, findings from that in order to influence our plan. Next slide. Okay, so I have one more slide that that I'm going to walk through and also invite uh Patrick and Jake up to speak on. But um I wanted to give you all a high, high-level overview of what this is going to take in terms of how long is it going to take and how much is it going to cost? Um, so this effort is going to be one of the largest infrastructure projects in San Mateo County. So it's going to be. Uh, you know, upward of something like seven hundred fifty million to a billion to produce, to to actually realize all these improvements. Um, because it's such a long corridor. Um, and because there are just so many needs along the corridor in terms of, you know, sidewalks missing. Um, gaps and in crossings and all of that. Um, so it's going to be very expensive and it's also going to take a long time. Which isn't probably not the thing you want to hear, but uh most likely going to take eight to ten years to realize all the improvements that we want to see. And so this is, Patrick and Jay can speak to this, but this is one of the great things about having. Um, this multi-agency effort is that we can all work together to pull together the, the grant funds that we need. And access funding sources that um normally aren't available to individual jurisdictions. Um, so I'm going to hand it off to Patrick to speak a little bit on this side.
Thanks, Cassie. Uh, great to see you all, council members and supervisor. Thanks for having us again. I'm Patrick Gilster, the Director of Planning and Fund Management. For the Transportation Authority. Don't worry, I'm only talking on one slide this time, not like the eighteen thousand I talked to in August. But how the Transportation Authority kind of gets involved in this is we manage the Measure A and W sales taxes, as I'm sure you've heard me talk about. Uh, for transportation funding. Uh, we have two dedicated measures, Measure A and Measure W. Each of those has a highway program that can fund elements like this. State Route eighty-two being one of the major uh highways in the county is eligible for those funds. Don't be alarmed by that seven hundred and fifty million dollar number. It is huge, but uh. In relation to that, we do have pretty substantial highway funding to be able to uh put towards these in the future. So the Transportation Authority can spend up to fifty percent uh of a highway project's total cost, so we can bring up to fifty percent of that. As Kathy mentioned, we probably can't fund all of that at once. Our funds accrue every year. Um, so we'll be working together to figure out how do we create different segments of the corridor that can go at different times uh and get implemented together. Um, to see the best benefits there. One of our biggest strengths in working together, as Kathy mentioned too, is that. We are used to going after funding for these types of things. And one of our main roles at the Transportation Authority. Is partnering with Caltrans and the other funding partners across the state and the federal government to bring in those funds. For instance, the um Express Lane project that's out there was five hundred and fifty million dollars, so this is slightly more than that. Um, but is immensely more complicated to going across multiple cities. What do we, thirteen cities, right? Fifteen, fifteen jurisdictions up and down. So coordinating that, all those unique visions. So as we do those um and get support about what your local visions are. Um, we know you participated too as part of the Atherton El Camino Real Study Two that was funded by the Transportation Authority. So all those different things. Kathy and her team are working to get there, but I think we're most excited about that. We are taking this seriously and wanting to show you all that we're taking it seriously as a collective way that we're all working to address this. Many of our highway projects, don't let Caltrans know I'm saying this, even though Jake is sitting here. When we take a look back at our funding, they can take twenty-plus years for like an interchange or something like that. We're hoping that this way of doing this. Can make this the reality of getting into the six to ten-year timeframe to implement these types of things. So. Uh, it's our commitment to all of you that we are trying to work on this together. So thank you all for having me. And I will pass it off to Jake.
Hello, thank you all for having me. My name is Jake Buffenbarger, Assistant Planning Branch for the Caltrans District Four. Just want to talk a little bit about Caltrans roles and responsibilities here. Um, Caltrans is required to engage in long-range planning uh for the facilities we own and operate, which includes State Route eighty-two or El Camino Real. Uh, how we do that has changed a lot in the last few years, just like Caltrans has changed in the last few years, you know. In the last ten years, really, we've gone from a. Auto-centric organization to one that considers all users of the roadway. Um, and our most robust long-range planning document is called the Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan, or CMCP for short. And essentially this document, uh, and if you, you know, went back to, you don't have to, but if you went back to Kathy's slide, it's kind of, you know. Shows that this is a concurrent planning process that we're doing here at Caltrans. Um, the document tackles a wide variety of uh issues and examines all modes of travel. And essentially explores the existing and future conditions of a facility and recommends projects to improve it. Uh, while District Four has completed a lot of CMCPs for more traditional freeway facilities. Uh, this is our first CMCP for what we call a conventional highway. Um, and because of the critical nature, unique features uh of El Camino and the various jurisdictions that it passes through. Uh, we're adjusting our standard operating procedure for this CMCP. Uh, because we understand that on a corridor like this, it takes extensive partnerships with regional and local stakeholders. And that's why we're very pleased to partner with Sam Trans, TA, CCAG and all the cities, counties and jurisdictions. Or cities and jurisdictions along the peninsula um with these ongoing GBI efforts. Uh, we plan to directly incorporate both the vision from the GBI and the projects determined in it. Uh, in the action plan into our CMCP. And we also plan to use the GBI stakeholder, a framework that they've created. Uh, to be the backbone of our own engagement strategy moving forward. to be the backbone of our own engagement strategy moving forward along eighty-two. So thank you very much for having me, so happy to answer any questions.
Jake and Patrick will be available for the Q and A. I just want to have one more slide up here. So these are our questions for you all, so happy to answer, you know, more. I know I covered a lot of content, happy to answer more general questions. But we're really interested to hear from you all, what goals do you have for the corridor? How can we best work together to advance this vision? And are you supportive of the GBI process as we've described it? I've also pasted here the goals that I went over in case you want to reference that as you're speaking. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from council members? Council member Rodriguez.
Thank you so much for, first of all, for the presentation, but I guess primarily for actually working together. That's wonderful, great news. And so I'm wondering how much weight is going to be given to to communities like North Fair Oaks where there's, you know, a lot of pedestrians, a lot of people who use public transportation, working class essentially. Because obviously that tends to be different from, you know, more affluent residents that rarely or never use public transportation, et cetera. So that's my first question.
So just to make sure I understand, you're asking, how will you weigh kind of the working class experience to other communities?
If there will be given a little bit more weight, you know, considering that that's the bulk of, you know, public transportation, biking, pedestrian.
Yes, yes. No, that's a great question. One of the things that we have at our disposal is all of our rider surveys from SAM Trans. And so we have our twenty-twenty-four triennial survey that looks at public transit riders in particular and how they're using the system and how they're using Rowdy CR. And that is a big part of what is guiding our path forward. So that's one of the benefits of having SAM Trans as part of this. We're helping kind of advocate for a lot of these public transit riders who maybe are working three jobs and can't come to a council meeting and give their input. It's often the, you know, certain advocates do show up, like the biking advocates, other types of folks who are sometimes working class or lower income, but can represent kind of a upper-class constituency. So we do try to really balance all of these types of inputs. So we're not just gathering input at, you know, outreach events people are showing up at, but we're also balancing that with the surveys that we're getting on board. And I think that is something that, right now, we're at the phase of this very conceptual vision for the corridor. But in, over the next couple of years, we'll be entering the design phases where we will have to select preferred alternatives for each community. And in that point, we're going to be doing very robust engagements. That would be in most likely twenty-twenty-seven, early twenty-twenty-seven. So we'll definitely be doing a lot more focused work in communities like North Fair Oaks.
Thank you. Council member Aponte.
Thank you for the presentation. How will the agency and partners ensure that funding also supports long-term maintenance and not just construction?
I can take that, and then I don't know, maybe Patrick. When I hear maintenance, I just look at Jake. That's a great point. So I think that has been, I mean, I think it's been a big challenge of El Camino in particular because we've kind of operated on like a, just kind of a repaving effort every couple. Jay can speak to this, but primarily what is driven the improvement, the improvements on El Camino has been repaving efforts because the, you know, if you go to certain segments of El Camino, you can see how bad the pavement is in certain areas. Those are being addressed. Caltrans has been really trying to incorporate more improvements when they're doing that, trying to add sidewalks, crosswalks, things like that. But often the budget's very limited for those types of improvements or types of repaving projects. And so one of the benefits of this regional effort is we're trying to think big from the beginning and say, you know, let's, let's, you know, set our sights higher than just, you know, these, these kind of spot improvements. Let's create a broader vision for what we want to see. And then from there, we're hoping that the infrastructure is just, we're able to achieve more from the beginning. And I'll, I'll, I'll let Patrick answer like the maintenance side of things, but that's, that's my take.
So I think it's an interesting question that we've been talking about a lot. So when we talk about Grand Boulevard Initiative, it's not just the project as we're talking about, but it's a program and forum for all of the jurisdictions to get together. And one of the things that we've constantly brought up from the beginning, especially when we start projects with Caltrans is we don't want to wait till we get to the end, I think, as you're saying, of a capital project and then say, oh, shoot, we need to do a maintenance agreement. With Caltrans, we haven't thought about this yet. So we actually want to use GBI as a forum to actually think about what that looks like. And some of the options we've been thinking about is whether or not some of our sales tax money could be used for that. It's not traditionally used for the operations and maintenance side. But what other public-private partnerships can we do? Are there business improvement districts or parking benefits? If there are paid parking up and down the corridor. So there's a whole host of different things we can talk about in terms of the more day-to-day maintenance of that, including maintenance of the bus stops and trashcans and all of those different things that go up and down there. So that's definitely something that is on all of our minds and that we're going to be kind of looking at also in parallel once we figure out what is the alternatives that we're looking at over the next few years. So, great question.
Thank you. I just ask because I do use SAM Trans buses, particularly ECR, to, you know, get to work. And now that it gets, that it's darker in the morning and the evening, as you mentioned, the bus shelters, you know, the new green ones, a lot of them already are broken, like broken glass or the lighting's not working anymore. The tying tickers that were on don't work anymore. So that was my question about maintenance. So you guys put in all these things, but then they're not maintained. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council member Daly.
A couple of things, thank you for the presentation. You know, I think the Bay Area or California in general, like, is there an overall plan to ever get people out of their cars? Because I think, you know, that winds up being, you know, the, a bigger problem. And when you think about El Camino, how important it is to get from point A to point B, especially when there aren't a lot of crossover places of the train tracks. So you either are going to push traffic onto the side streets, which would mean, in our case, Middlefield, which we already know has its challenges, or Broadway and Bay, which are a little bit better taken care of because they're Redwood City. I mean, all the places where you need El Camino because it's either that, finding those crossovers or the freeway. So it is an important route. And I don't know personally how I could get around it when I, when I think about going to get around the Bay Area. And then, you know, kind of really understanding commuters and where they are going and why people are in their cars. A classic problem is Willow Road in Menlo Park. It's people coming from the East Bay, coming to work, crossing over. And so there's all these places where there's all these challenges, but they really boil down to people still wanting to be in their cars. And I would love to be able to walk down El Camino, but, I mean, it's, it's not safe now. It would be nice, but I don't know that I want to lose a lane for bikes and better sidewalks in order to make that happen. So that's my comment. But yeah, I think we need to get California out of cars and I can say good luck with that, so.
Council member Esser.
Yeah, I have a process question for you, Kathy. We're talking about thirteen, fifteen jurisdictions along El Camino. And I guess what I'm wondering about is just kind of the continuity between jurisdictions. Some cities, towns might want two lanes in each direction, some might want three. Some might want a bike lane, some might not care about bike lanes. I guess what I'm wondering is who's going to decide who gets what? And, you know, so we can avoid kind of this serpentine, whether it gets wider here and now we're there and you can ride your bike here, but not there. Who's the ultimate decision-maker in that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I feel like this is not on, but maybe should I hold it? Would that be better? That's a great question. And I, this is also to Council member Daly's point about getting people out of cars. So we actually looked at the data and the average trip length is about three miles. So that just tells you a couple of things. It's easily, somewhat easily substitutable by, you know, bus or bikes or walking, but maybe not walking. But it's also, people aren't traveling on El Camino up and down the whole way. You know, some, some Rowdy CR riders do ride from Daly City to Menlo Park. However, most of the people who are using El Camino are using it to travel between communities. So maybe they're going from Redwood City to San Mateo and they don't want to get on the freeway. So all that is to say, we don't have to have a continuous facility up and down of El Camino the whole way. We don't have to have, you know, one solution. And there are a lot of like local contexts that we need to consider. There are places where, you know, parking is super important to local businesses or there's places, the whole corridor is actually mostly six, six lanes, so three lanes in each direction. But there are sections that are more constrained, they have two lanes in each direction. So you can't just, you know, take one, one template and apply it everywhere. We are trying to come up with context-specific design. However, we do, we do want continuous facilities that don't, somewhat continuous facilities that don't just end at the end of a city boundary. And we don't want it to be that we have like a bike lane and then a bus lane and a bike lane and a bus lane. So that's the value of having this regional effort. I would say the ultimate decision-maker is Caltrans because it's their facility. However, by having this regional effort, we are able to demonstrate our preferences. Local jurisdictions can demonstrate their preferences. SAM Trans and other partners can also say, you know, this section of El Camino is super congested for buses. If you really want to maintain our bus travel times, we'd rather, you know, actually improve them than make them worse by adding a road diet. However, there are some sections where a road diet is totally, you know, makes sense and is, is the preferred for that community, such as in Colma. So ultimately, it's going to be, right now, we're at the point where everyone's agreeing because we have these kind of broad designs and, and broad plans. But at some point, we're going to get to that point where we do need to have those difficult conversations. And I think that's, that's the value of having all these partners together.
Yeah, and as you study patterns too, you'll be able to say, well, yeah, okay, a bus, a bike lane, for example, is necessary on this stretch. Three miles north, there isn't so much bike traffic, so we'll just make trade-offs as we go along, I guess.
Yeah, and one of the recommendations we have from our action plan is for El Camino to, the corridor to be a backbone bicycle network. So that means either El Camino or parallel routes that are reasonable for people to bike should be the backbone because there are very few routes, there are very few corridors like El Camino, really no other corridor like El Camino in San Mateo County that connects all the local jurisdictions. So that's one of the, the examples of some of the types of recommendations that we make.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Council member Rodriguez.
One more comment as a suggestion. I'm hoping that you guys not only take an internal look at, you know, what is it that our communities need, but also an external look at, you know, what other cities are doing with, you know, some of their corridors. Particularly, you know, cities that have like massive numbers of people, like Mexico, I'm thinking about Mexico City and cities that are, you know, they have so little space that they have to maximize it, like Singapore, which is also making a lot of good changes in terms of the environment and a combination of that. I believe that, you know, going back to Council member Daly, you know, about getting people off their cars, I believe that if we build, you know, something that is safe and nice, comfortable, I think people would use it, you know, I definitely would. Sometimes I ride my bicycle on, on the Middlefield Road segment, but on El Camino Real, you know, I, I don't want to venture with my bicycle. Yeah. Anyway, that's my suggestion. But yeah, just to answer your question, you know, I think, I think most people would be supportive of, you know, of the plan, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council members regarding this agenda item? No, I would like to make a comment. The, well, you mentioned the twenty years, but we've been on the Middlefield Road project for over twenty years. So I, right? And we're just talking about half a mile. So hopefully it will be take less than twenty, twenty years for what you're proposing here. And what other jurisdictions? Because, you see, El Camino is, is a major artery through North Fair Oaks. We have Middlefield Road and we have El Camino. That, that part of El Camino, Redwood City is North Fair Oaks. And it's a mixed-use area, you know, where we have still now, even though that's kind of phasing out, but we do have a, a commercial, you know, somewhat industrial mixed in with housing. So we have that kind of element there. As we're moving forward, you know, with all the redevelopment, redevelopment happening in that corridor, more housing is being built, which hopefully will encourage more public transportation and that will continue to improve, just like the new train, the Caltrain is now. I see, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but the, the frequency now of Caltrain is like every fifteen or twenty minutes now on the train and very comfortable, very new wifi. I mean, so people are very inspired to do that. And if we could provide somewhat of that kind of service on El Camino corridor, people will use it. So that's my comment, thank you. Are there any comments?
Public comment? If you would like to comment on agenda item number five, please raise hands in the future on Zoom or bring a speaker slip up to the court during this time. We do not have any public comment.
Thank you so much, thank you. We will now move on to our last agenda item for this evening. We are finalizing and approving our work plan. So we've been working on this work plan for, for a while, several study sessions. And I want to thank the county for providing us the facilities downtown to, to have our study sessions. So we have come out with what we determine as priorities in North Fair Oaks and what we want to include and have approved as a work plan, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, because we are basically now in our last week of October here coming up. So this is definitely twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. And the three areas of interest or focus for us, as we all have determined, have been economic development, public safety, and parking in North Fair Oaks. So that is what our work plan consists of moving forward. So this is our agenda item or action item for this evening. Are there any comments regarding this agenda item from our council members? Catherine, member Daly.
I feel like we've talked about this enough and I'd like to see it formalized. I think these things have continued to show up in the North Fair Oaks community plan. And there, there are things that we all feel are, I thought we felt are pretty important. So I think at this point, I'd like to see us just approve it and, and get busy.
Are there any comments or questions regarding this agenda item? Well, having no comments on this, I would like to, this is, this is a motion action item. So we do need a motion.
I, I move to approve the action plan as drafted.
As drafted?
As I.
Second?
Commencing a call vote. Council member Esser?
Yes.
Council member Whitney?
Yes.
Council member Daly?
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council member Parisi?
Yes.
Council member Orosco? Council member? Council member Aponte?
Yeah.
And Chair Prado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. We will now, uh, move on to our report hours. Are there any, uh, report out from, uh, District Four office?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I hope you're all doing well. Um, I have a few things to report out. We did send out our, our monthly communications to you all, so I hope you had a chance to read it. Any feedback if you have that, um, please share with us and we'll improve anything that you guys have or see in the community. Please also share with us. Um, so just a quick reminder, we have a date for the North Fair Oaks holiday event. Um, that is going to be happening on Saturday, December, oh my gosh, I don't know. I think it's eight.
December seventh?
December seventh, so it'll be a Sunday and it'll be at the Mural Parking on Second Avenue, Middlefield Road, so hope you can join us. Um, and then spread the word to the community.
But that, that's a Saturday, right?
It's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
It's a Saturday and it's a Saturday.
Saturday, December seventh.
It's, it's Sunday, sure.
It's a Sunday. I apologize for the mistake. We will Thank you. Right before this meeting, actually, we went to go visit, um, the Stan, the Reimagined Cancer Event with Stanford. Um, they are going to have their second, um, event at the, um, Powell Center on Sa- this Saturday from, um, ten to one, so hope that you guys are able to go and give some feedback and input as they're looking for, uh, for that from the community. Um, we are off, we also officially scheduled the one-on-ones for you, uh, council members with Spire de Gaucho. And that'll be tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Um, have you been following the sheriff item? Um, issue, the board, uh, last two weeks ago, uh, unanimously, unanimously voted um, to remove the sheriff, um, at Tuesday's, uh, these past Tuesdays, Tuesdays meeting. The board agreed to hold a special meeting, uh, this upcoming Tuesday, uh, to get community input on what direction the board should take in the next steps for this matter. Uh, please join if you're able to. We currently do not have a time set for this meeting. Um, but as soon as we have that, we will share that with you all and then hopefully you can push that out to the community. We really want to hear from the North Fair Oaks community on that matter. Um, another big, uh, impact in our community is the federal shutdown and threats to CalFresh food assistance. This halt drove the Board of Supervisors to, just stand with local nonprofits who work in this space. This past board meeting supervisors approved nine hundred thousand for the distribution of protein by Smirjin House to our vulnerable neighbors who are most impacted by this shutdown. We also have kicked off our District Four, District, District Four discretionary Measure K listening sessions. And we'll be making our, a stop here in North Fair Oaks on December tenth, um, from six to seven. So if you want, if you're able to join us and spread the word, this is really for our local nonprofits and CPOs um, to, for us to hear from them about community needs and impact and how, uh, and help shape how we spend our Measure K discretionary funds. And the last thing, um, that our office wants to, to let you know and the community know is that these are trying times. And we understand that the fear that our community is feeling with everything going on in the federal government. Um, our office and the county stand with our immigrant neighbors and our office is here to talk through concern, solutions to, and collaborate on. So please, um, we are an ally and we're here to partner with you all and, you know, um, help support the community as much as we can. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. And thank you for the supervisor being here this evening. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
You know, uh, we do this in first grade. Can I get a shout out? A shout out to your beautiful presentation at the rally downtown a few hours ago. Thank you so much. So, yeah, we say, can I get a shout out?
Sounds great. Uh, council members, uh, report out. Council member Esr, anything to report out this evening?
Uh, just that I am planning on attending the Measure K session on, uh, December tenth, so I'm looking forward to that.
Awesome. Great. Uh, council member Whitney?
Nothing important or substantial. I just went to a lot of park open houses the last few weeks and it's just cool. There's neat stuff in our community. That's it.
All right, thank you. Council member Daly?
I'll share that, uh, Christian and I have been, um, spent a couple Saturdays and actually again last night, walking Middlefield Road, trying to get out the red cards and the door hangers and the stuff that I, uh, Faith in Action has been doing. I have a whole bag of stuff in my car. I just picked up more. Um, the big thing with the Faith in Action stuff right now is that now they are uh, accompanying people to their immigration hearings rather than finding out that somebody is up there. They will act, people can actually make an appointment with a, a Faith in Action lawyer. And a lot of people in the community don't know that. That's on the new stuff that they're giving out. So if anyone has any extra time or lives in an apartment complex or knows of family members or friends that live in apartment complexes that want to put these door hangers on, please reach out to me because or Christian and we can get you copies of it. But we'll be probably heading out again Saturday, so.
Have we distributed red cards to like the merchants up and down Middlefield? Thanks so much to both of you. That's great.
But they need more.
Okay.
Yeah, they need more.
Great, thank you. Uh, council member Rodriguez?
Um, no, nothing to report.
Uh, council member Parisi?
Hi, thank you. Um, building on what Kathleen said, I distributed all my red cards and shout out to, uh, the county for, um, preparing these in dual languages, but I ran out and I think there's more that are needed. Um, and also, uh, so I would love to have more of those and those hang tags and all of the things because I, uh, Juan Carlos and I and Beatrice attended, um, a North Fair Oaks community meeting. I have hosted other things in my community and when I handed out the card store, uh, community, community and like commercial residents to business to business, they were very concerned about what is happening and what's coming. And now it's clearly here. Um, and so I think the more we can get of those um, would be great. So I would love to know how we get our hands on more of those to both distribute, um, locally, but also let our local neighbors and, and you know, business owners know how they can get more. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. Uh, council member Rosco?
Last week, I went to the Casa Circulo Cultural event downtown Redwood City. They're going to have their big Dia de los Muertos event on November second. So if any of you are interested in either volunteering or being part of it, please let me know. Um, I can share the form. That could either be face painting, decorating altars, uh, that's that. And then through work, we actually got to work with two North Fair Oaks businesses. We developed two websites and logos and we helped them digitize their business. That is Google My Business as well as, um, social media. So it's a good, good one for small businesses here.
Awesome. Uh, council member Aponte?
Thank you. Um, I also went to the Stanford event, uh, a couple hours ago. And it was pretty cool seeing all the ideas they have, they have planned. Um, I also did see a lot of you guys throughout the month, whether it was the, uh, Multicultural Institute event or the Dia de los Muertos preview event. So thank you for, uh, letting us, letting us know about those events as and also as Kathleen mentioned, going all over Middlefield Road, passing out information, um, all of them, all of the uh, store people, they're really grateful. I feel like, especially yesterday with the news that came out, uh, people were just very concerned. So them having this information was very helpful. Um, and then in regards to the sheriff, uh, I, I tried to tune in to those meetings. And I was surprised there wasn't really any, I mean, there were some comments in for the sheriff, but I recall seeing like new segments in here in North Fair Oaks where, you know, the, the community here really supported her. And so for them not to show up at, you know, the, the Board of Supervisor, Supervisor meetings where it was, I guess, um, sad. Um, and of course, you know, uh, I would have preferred a recall instead of, you know, whatever proposition or, or ended up happening. Um, but moving forward, again, I think, uh, it should be the people to vote the sheriff in and not to appoint someone. Um, and lastly, in my other hat that I wear as a union leader, um, Proposition fifty, you know, make sure to vote. It's this November fourth. It's the only question on the ballot and, uh, I think it's a very important measure to, you know, protect our voice in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, my report out is, uh, again, there, like everyone has said tonight, the red cards, we definitely need more. Um, to continue to circulate them in our community, it's very important. It was a pleasure to go to the pre-event of the Casa Circulo, uh, in downtown Redwood City. It's, uh, always a unique, unique opportunity for us to support our local nonprofit in North Fair Oaks on Middlefield. Um, and of course, the major event is November second. So hopefully everybody can make it to that event downtown, uh, November second. Um, that'll be, uh, important. Um, also met with the Government Affairs from Stanford University, because as you've noticed on Broadway, uh, Stanford continues to develop more, um, even though it's not North Fair Oaks technically, but it is our area and we are affected by that. Um, and I did ask them to communicate with us and share with us, um, everything that's going on over there because they're making major development and it is, does have a direct effect on us. Um, and, uh, since we're, we're moving, you know, forward with, you know, public safety and our roads and our streets and, um, you know, as they continue to build, um, it would be nice of them to communicate with us, share with us, take their, uh, our, our input. Um, and they were very receptive and definitely want to create a, uh, more, a, uh, better relationship moving forward with that. So just wanted to share that with the council. So don't be surprised in the future agenda items for that, for them to present information uh, of what they're doing there. And that's it.
To the chair, just a quick, a quick announcement. Um, I will send a link from our website um, about the Know Your Rights, about Know, uh, Know Your Rights information, so you can download, um, the red cards and print it on your own. And it has on the door hanger as well. So I'll send that to you all. It's just more information about Know Your Rights. And to answer your question, um, council member Parisi as well. That way you have it.
Okay, great. I will, uh, now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.